Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the common council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roach.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
He is excused.
Grisham.
Also excused.
Haas.
Here.
Eight present to excused.
We have a quorum. Please arise if you are able and join us for the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by Elder Person Keen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, moving on to item D. We have two public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of West Beecher Street from South 92nd Street to west of South 99th Street by minor asphalt resurfacing with miscellaneous walk repair, storm sewer relay, and utility adjustments.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor Devine. So this is the public hearing for Beecher Street. Here are the limits we're talking about, from 92nd Street to the dead end west of 99th Street. Here's some pictures from the pavement. This is why we're looking to resurface it. A lot of it is broken up. The original pavement was put in between 1966 and 1974, so it's 48 to 56 years old, which is about exactly how long we expect a concrete road to last. But at this point, maintenance, filling these potholes is becoming difficult and expensive. So we'd like to cover it all with asphalt. That would also include repairing any curb and gutter that's broken. We put the new asphalt surface over the top, like I said, as you're seeing in this picture. There would be some minor repairs to underground utilities. We would fix any sidewalk trippers or cracked slabs that we find. We would try to keep two-way traffic at all times, since we're not ripping out the whole road, we're just covering it. So we would hope to keep the driveways open, keep the street open. But if you do park on the streets, you would probably have to park on the neighboring streets, which would be allowed without a permit. This is what the final product would look like, a nice asphalt street with sidewalk fixed where it needs to be, curb fixed where it needs to be. This is the cost of the project. The pavement will be $548,000, a little bit of sanitary sewer, $45,000, a little bit of storm sewer work for $169,000, a little bit of water main adjustments for $24,000. So the total cost is $786,000. Here is how it's being funded. The overwhelming majority, 59%, is coming from the general fund, which is the citywide property taxes. The water, water main work would be paid for out of the water utility, which is a citywide fee. The storm sewer would be coming out of the citywide storm sewer fund, and the sanitary work would be from the citywide sanitary sewer utility fund. So assessments are only 11%, $87,000 of the total cost. Here's a typical assessment if you have a 40-foot lot, a 45-foot lot. The assessment rate is $42.93, so it comes to $19,931.85. Here's an important point. The bills would not be mailed out until March of 2023, so almost a year from now. And if you choose one of our payment plans, which I'll talk about, you wouldn't actually be making your first payment until December of 2023, not 2022, but 2023, so that's almost 20, 21 months from now. So like I said, we do have different payment options. You can pay it off, all off at once when you get the bill in March, or you can go on the five-year plan or the 10-year plan. We do have interest, but we're not making a profit on that interest. We have to borrow the funds for this project, so we're paying municipal bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city is just passing along the interest that we're paying to those municipal bondholders. We're not making a profit off of it. So on a typical 10-year payment plan, your first year, assuming $1,900, your first year payment for the whole year is $270, or $23 per month. And then the 10th year, in the year 2032, you'd pay $201 for the whole year, or about $17 a month. Why do we special assess? We have been doing it a long time. In the old days, the residents actually paid 100% of the cost to the street because by state law, state law defines that they are enjoying a unique benefit from having this improvement in front of their property that the rest of the city is not getting. So in the old days, the residents paid a lot more. On this cost, on this project, as I said, the price, or the assessments are $87,000, which is about 11% of the total cost. And the rate of $42.93 is the same rate for any, I should say residential, any residential property anywhere in the city. It doesn't matter how high the traffic volumes are, or how high the actual bid prices are. Everybody's paying $42.93 everywhere in the city, so everyone's treated equally. Like I said, this is a state law that's been around for over 100 years, and there have been over 100 court cases that have upheld this law as being a reasonable way to recoup the costs of these projects. Special assessments are also the only way to ensure that any tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, or railroads pay their fair share. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that do not pay any property taxes, and they're all shown on this map here. Any of the colored areas are tax-exempt, but they do pay for special assessments. So this is really the only time that we actually get any tax money from them. Businesses, corporations, and manufacturers also pay a higher rate of $53 to $64 per foot because they have more traffic, and so they pay a higher rate because of that. And this map over here shows all the properties, all the colored places are all the properties that have paid a special assessment just in the last 15 years. So certainly on the east end of the city, it's every, almost every property. And as we, as the city developed to the west, we're moving west as well. So if you go back far enough, everybody in the city has paid a special assessment at some point, except for a few exceptions. So here's the tentative schedule. We're looking to start advertising in May 27th for bids. We would have the bid opening on about June, on June 15th. The city does not get to pick the contractor. It has to be the low bidder by state law. The common council would hopefully, or presumably, award the contract on June 21st. It would take about a month to get the contracts and insurance and everything and the bonding all in order, so we would hope to start in July, and we would certainly be done by October. But I think really it's only going to take about two months to do the work, so it would not take that whole time. And the best way to find out what the schedule is, is to sign up for our construction in progress report. If you go to our website, it's about the 10th one down. We'll send out an email every week, tells you what's happening, and when things are going to happen, and who to contact, and who the contractor is, and everything you need to know about this project and all the other projects going on in the city. And you'll be in the know then if you sign up for that report, so I highly recommend that you do that. With that, I'll have, entertain any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, are there any questions from the members of the common council on this Seeing none, are there any members of the audience with questions on this item? If there are, yeah, please come up to the podium and then give us your name and address, and then...
Hi, my name's Rob Tibbetts, 2077 South 96th Street. And I can't argue that Beecher needs to be repaired, okay? But there's been some things that have been out of the residents' hands that we haven't been able to control, such as when National Avenue was redone, we get a ton of traffic coming off Lincoln, cutting through down Beecher to 92nd. And when they started doing that after National opened up, it continued. We have people cutting through the neighborhood, coming up from 92nd out to 98th or 99th. They're trying to avoid the Lincoln-National intersection, okay? That's not the residents' fault, okay? I understand that the special assessment has been, you know, approved in court and what that, but perhaps the rates should be adjusted? Because a lot of this traffic, it's not, and this is a residential neighborhood, and another unfortunate byproduct of this is that there is traffic running up and down between 92nd and 98th, and some of these, I mean, they're doing 50 miles an hour. People are passing other cars on the left. At the very least, okay, if the council is going to go ahead with this plan, at the very least, all right, we should actually get a couple stop signs on Beecher. Perhaps at 94th and 96th, to one, discourage people from using this residential neighborhood with kids and dogs and everybody else out enjoying the neighborhood as a cut-through to avoid Lincoln and National. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Daniels, is there a way to install any traffic calming components to this?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we, we really aren't supposed to use stop signs to control speed. That's a big no-no in federal rules. But there might be some methods, you know, bump outs or some traffic calming that we could do. I mean, we haven't quite designed this yet, so I can look at, you know, ways that we could perhaps calm, calm the traffic, is what we call. But we, we don't like to use stop signs that way. It breeds disrespect, because then people just blow through the stop signs, and you've got a little kid that thinks they're going to stop at the stop sign, and they don't, and it actually creates a worse situation if you put too many in. So I'd rather not do that. I'll look at some other options.
Would speed bumps?
Well, we haven't, we haven't done that anywhere in the city. We're, the snowplows don't react too well to them. I know we, we could look at that, I guess, but we haven't done that anywhere else in the city. We prefer to use other methods, like, I don't know if you've seen bump outs on some of the other streets that kind of neck the road down and make people slow down because, because the road is narrower. We'd prefer to do something like that, that, rather than speed bumps, because the snowball drivers hit them, and, and they're not good for emergency vehicles as well, but... So yes, we'll, we'll look at something like that. I had a feeling that would be a concern. I wouldn't say the, the road has prematurely deteriorated. Most residential roads are more affected by the weather. Cars don't really do a lot of damage. Trucks do. So if you had a lot of trucks, that would be another case. But cars don't do a lot of damage to a concrete road that's seven inches thick. It's really the, the freeze thaw, freeze thaw for 50 years, you know, and if it's, it's a winter where it's freezing and thawing multiple times in a winter, that's like, you know, extra years right there. So most of the deterioration at the joints, that is mostly caused by the weather. It's not really caused by cars. So I wouldn't, you know, 50 years is what we expect, and that's what we got here. We got more than 50 years for most of the streets. So I wouldn't suggest that the traffic during National, you know, accelerated the deterioration. I don't, I don't believe that to be true, so...
I don't believe the traffic helped it, and even by the photos you showed there, it wasn't necessarily the seams. There's large asphalt patches, okay? And to say that cars, pickup trucks, okay, especially just a, you double or triple the amount of traffic, to say it's not going to affect the street, it just defies simple physics.
They're not, they're not heavy enough to really put a beating, that's what I've read. So it's mostly the weather. In Wisconsin, it's mostly the weather that deteriorates a street, and it's that 50 years of freezing and thawing that really causes the joints to crumble like that.
Well, then what about Rogers in the same neighborhood? Wasn't that done at the same time? And that's not nearly in the state of disrepair. But it also doesn't see the traffic.
I don't, I don't remember offhand. I think that one's a little bit newer to the, to the north there. I don't know offhand when that was paved, but I don't...
Does anybody else have questions on our first public hearing this evening?
Evan Anderson, 9630 West Beecher Street. I was just curious, how often do you ask the residents of this, of the road to be billed for this? Like, how often does that happen for all the road repairs in West Dallas?
Every 50 years. I mean, some, there are properties on the east end that have paid four times over the past 100 years, so I would expect this asphalt to last another 25 or 30. And then, you know, the, the rate you're paying to resurface is almost half of what it would be to reconstruct, so I'm trying to save everybody money, trying to save the city money and save the residents, because there'd be a higher rate if we have to reconstruct it, which, you know, if we let it go too long, we'll have to reconstruct it, and then the rate will be higher for you, and it'll be much higher for us at the city as well. So, you know, concrete lasts about 50 years, and then you resurface it, it lasts about...
Is it common practice to bill the people that live to repair a road?
Yes, yes, for 100 years. It's, we've done every, every street that way.
And also, like, if someone was to sell their home, who would have to get the bill for that?
It's between the buyer and the seller. It happens every day. Depends on how you negotiate in the, in the closing. It could be the buyer, or it could be the seller, we don't care, but you just have to work it out at the closing, so...
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?
Hi, I am Kelly Miller. I live at 2077 South 96th Street. I just want to reiterate what he had stated. I live on a corner. My first concern is, because I think most of us live on corners, we're assessed for Beecher, and we could potentially now be assessed again for the other side. I've lived there now three years. I bought the house three years ago. I, when I moved in, was warned of the traffic. I have twin girls, and I was warned of the traffic and to not let them play in the yard by the street. So when somebody tells you that there is a, a large amount of traffic down Beecher, it is significant. It is anything from cars to trucks to, I've seen large trucks, I've not, semis too, actually, that have gone down. So it's not limited to small vehicles. And the thing, too, is that these vehicles, from 99th to 92nd, I can guarantee you, every day, I see somebody going at least 45 to 50 down that street. It is a thoroughfare through avoiding Lincoln, avoiding National, so we do get a lot of that traffic. And what he had said, too, with, I understand owning a house, it, the value is going to go to me, it's in front of my house, whatnot, but it's like, I feel like we're going to pay this, and if you would have given something similar, because I didn't receive a $1,900 bill, I received almost a $2,400 bill. So I'm not quite sure what the figures would be for me every year, but that was more accurate, and I'm not quite sure what theirs are, but we're pretty much the same with the footage of residences, so I'm guessing they're about $2,400. That's a significant amount of money, especially coming off of a pandemic. So given the fact that you have all of this extra traffic, and I know that, you know, I didn't bring any stats with me, but there is an overflow, and you can see it every day, cut down 98th, and then they cut down Beecher, and they have speed all the way down 92nd. There's nothing to stop them. And I get, you don't want to put stop signs there. But if you lived there, you'd want to do something. You would. Because I have two kids, they can't really play outside. There's dogs that get walked by their owners, there's little kids that get walked by their parents. Everybody has to watch out for these speeders. There's been car crashes at my corner on 96th and Beecher because they're speeding. I mean, I didn't, again, get the stats for that, but can you seriously take into consideration doing something? If you want me to invest in the road that's in front of my house, can you do something for me and my kids and everybody else that lives around there? And take safety into concern, too, while you're doing this?
Yep, absolutely. Well, absolutely.
I get you don't want to put stop signs up, but you know what? I want you to. I want you to do something.
We'll, we'll look at ways to slow the traffic down. I, you know, I can't control the traffic, but we can...
I'm not saying that you can control that, but to, to use that as an excuse, that they'll just blow off the stop signs, to me, that's not a good answer, because it's like, that's like putting your hands up and saying, well, there's really nothing we can do. It's, I live there.
If I, if I could, I was going to say earlier, when the gentleman sitting next to you spoke, excuse me a second. I feel like I haven't spoken for a while. We have occasionally put stop signs up, and then honestly, and I think a lot of people up here will tell you, two, three weeks later, the same individuals or neighbors are calling and saying, nobody's stopping at the stop signs, and the, the police simply don't have time to just sit there for an extended period of time, because they're responding to calls for service. I mean, there are things we can do. I just don't think, and I'm assuming that's where city engineer is going, I just don't think a stop sign is the best option.
Whatever. I mean, I'm open to options, just something to, for a solution to this problem that's been ongoing for three years for me at this house, and obviously, my neighbors who warned me.
I've heard from people on that stretch, and I've asked police to do extra enforcement there when time allows, but I think this is the opportunity to adjust it, because it's going to be redone, and that gives us the time to work on the infrastructure.
Right.
So we hear ya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions or comments on public hearing number one? Okay, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your comments and questions. We will move on now to public hearing number two, and I will ask the clerk to read that one.
Resolution relative to the determination for a special use permit for Domino's, a proposed restaurant, to be located at 10922 West National Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Sher, when you're ready?
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening. This is a, for Domino's Pizzeria. They're relocating from 107th and Oklahoma, in the strip mall in the bottom of the image of the picture here, to Highway 100 and National, in a former frozen yogurt shop. It was a number of different restaurants over the years, even an enterprise car rental. But they, they hope to open in, later this summer, in August of 2022. The property is Zone C4, regional commercial. You may recognize the property here on, on the north side of National Avenue, former Orange Leaf, and I think Menche's Frozen Yogurt, among other things. Here's an image of the building from National Avenue. The, the Domino's pizzas, you may know, is a carryout and delivery. There is no seating inside the building as proposed. We'll get into the floor plan in a little bit. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 AM to midnight, and this is within the wheelhouse of other Highway 100 area pizzeria type of restaurants, and, and nearby restaurants like McDonald's, Taco Bell, and Toppers. So, so you could see here that the Domino's will not be open the latest, and they are, they are comparable, so they're actually closing a little bit earlier than some of the others nearby. The floor plan, there is going to be extensive interior renovations within the building. The blue areas are the back of, back of house, the kitchen prep areas, an office area, the cooler. The main entrance will be on the front of the building, on the southeast corner of the building, where it, where it has been, and then there's going to be a sort of a wraparound common area or customer area, including a bathroom and counter space and a waiting area for, for customers as they wait for their pizza if they should stop in. The site and landscaping plan, they are proposing some updates to the plan, in keeping with the existing theme on the site. The site is, on the, to the west is 110th Street. There's an alley to the, to the north of the property, and then National Avenue's on the very bottom. The existing landscaping is going to be replenished and freshened up. The two accessways into the property off of National Avenue are going to remain, and then there's going to be parking surrounding the building, of course. There is a existing masonry wall as well that surrounds three of the four perimeters of the, of the property. So that does provide a little bit of resistance to sightlines into the property if you're, if you happen to be a neighbor to the north or to the west. And it's just a view from 110th Street, looking down that alley on the top of the image, and then that's the proposed Domino's restaurant. And then the lower picture is just a closer-up view of that retaining wall along the, the north side and the north property line. There is going to be some exterior repainting of the building, not really too big of a departure from what's there now. They're going to be, basically, the biggest drastic color change is going to be the, the blue color. It's a California blue, and it's going to be on the trim work of the building and the soffit areas. The rest of the building is going to be two different tones of beige, so really not a real big departure from what was there previously. There will be two wall signs in the exterior of the building, one face on the south elevation and another on the west. And planning commission has recommended approval. There have been no objections to date, and just the image here is just sort of the, the technical review process has gone through, leading up to the planning commission approval March 23rd, and then tonight's common council public hearing is our, is our next step. So thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sher. Are there any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Stefanski.
Steve, is this going to be a replacement for the one that's on 108th and, or, I'm sorry, Highway 100 and Oklahoma?
You are correct, yeah. They are going to be relocating.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Elder Person Ranky.
I would welcome Domino's. This building basically has been empty for a couple of years already, and the businesses that locate there seem to have a problem and don't last very long. So I'm wondering, is Domino's purchasing this or leasing it?
They're purchasing the, the property.
They're purchasing the building, so that would give me the impression it would be longevity. I'm hoping they're, they're successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members of the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience? Everybody Loves Pizza? All right. That will close public hearing number two, and we will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is where residents may address the council on matters of interest to them during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must, again, announce their name and address, and we ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Please approach the podium.
Evening. Matthew Peets, 2457 South 63rd Street. I assume everybody can hear me clearly? Okay. I was hoping not to have to return here tonight and bring up the issue of fireworks regulation. Even though I am grateful for the council sending a resolution to the state, that in itself is only one way to change how we observe this holiday. Unfortunately, any action taken by the state will only take place next year at this time. Through my research, this council has the ability to act now to change how we observe the fourth that is ahead of us. Through having conversations with various people, I present to you tonight an idea that I hope that the safety committee will consider, and perhaps develop, and put into motion for this year's celebration. This newest proposal is for the safety committee to develop a pilot program to give those who do buy the fireworks to be able to use them in a safe manner that would be controlled in a fashion I'm getting to in a moment. I believe that there are two places that this can work. The first is State Fair in the west side parking lot, and the other is the south area by Nathan Hale High School. The safety committee can create a permit that would allow those to use these products, and of course, the city can expand with State Fair on this. The control... The control premise can be handled by the Police Department with the authority of the Safety Committee to have them create a police auxiliary to maintain a controlling environment. I'm always willing to be a part of any process in dealing with this issue. I hope this council will take my presentation to heart and attempt some fashion of adjusting the current way things are currently happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? All right, then we will close citizen participation, and we will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed on the top of page two of your agendas. Item G, I do not have a mayor's report this evening, so we'll go right to item H. Are there any reports from the alderpersons? Okay.
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the Common Council meeting of April 7, 2022.
You have a motion and a second by Alderman Vitale. Any changes or adjustments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Then we will move on to item J, Standing Committee Report. License and Health, I'm assuming we'll take that after...
Yeah, well, we can do it now, really. I mean, and everything is in good standing, you know.
You don't want to take it after?
No. No, we can do it now.
You're the chair.
I mean, yeah, well, let's vote on it.
All right.
Four and five.
Make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion of approval by the License and Health Committee.
Is there a second? Do we need a second on this? No? Okay. There's a motion to approve. Is there any discussion?
I get it, second.
Gotcha.
Mayor DeVine, I'm just, just asking, so all the inspections and everything have been completed?
No.
Not for item number four, and for number, number five, they have been.
Did you catch that, Alderman Vitale? Item four does not have all their inspections in, but item five does.
So we hold four and then look to vote on five?
If we can get an amended motion.
Well, that's up to the...
Alderman Lysick.
What we used to do continually for years is pass these pending approval of all the inspection reports being in and occupancy permit being issued.
The attorney's up.
Chair, I understand historically that the city has approved them with some sort of condition, but based on some recent case law that's out there. I'd recommend against doing that, and that's why this new procedure was implemented. Because there are two separate license applications, there is the ability to divide the two. I'd recommend that someone just simply say division so that it would be handled separately. And then if the council still wishes, you can move to adopt five and postpone four.
I'd like to divide them.
Okay. No motion upon a request by a person, it would be automatically divided. So I'd now advise the mayor to handle number four first.
Okay, there's no objection, I assume. And if I could just clarify, I think item four was not ready and item five was? Okay, I think you might have inverted those.
If the council still chooses and a motion to postpone item four to the following meeting would be in order.
Okay. Alderman Vitale, you have a, I believe your motion is still on the floor to approve. Do you want to change your motion?
Yeah, I could retrieve my motion.
And what, change it to, what was the recommendation of?
Just to postpone until the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
For number four. Okay. So then item four is in front of us to postpone until the next meeting. And then, well, we'll first, we'll vote on that and then take up five. Correct?
Yes, this is a procedural motion, so it's a voice vote.
Okay. So all in favor of postponing item four?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item four is postponed, and now we have item five.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval, item number five.
Okay, any discussion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, item five is approved. And we'll go to the consent agenda. Alderman Lysick.
Mayor DeVine, if there's no objection from any of the council members, I would move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay. No separate action. There is no discussion. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person King.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.